Called meeting order, Mr. Scott, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir.
Please rise, put your hand over your heart, and take your hats off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Sheevy, Breckus, Saadra, Delgado, George, Jordan, Kachal.
All right, we'll go to public comment. Ronald McGee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Especially this young city councilman down here that's doing such a good job. I think he ought to put a class on for the other city council members on how to interface with the public. Get out there on the street and find out what's going on. Okay, what I'm going to talk about today, my background is I'm a CWA Union Member, which is Communication Workers of America, U.S. Army Military Police, disabled veteran from football injury in the Army, heavyweight boxer, which I scare the police because I'm rated as a boxer. What I'm working on, a couple of things, people in general don't think I'm handicapped. I'm dual handicap, military. Then I had my hips replaced, which is civilian, so I come up with the blue sticker, I think I showed you, with your ID card in it, working with the governor, so people will knowledge you. The only thing they'll know is the blue sticker. They don't understand nothing. Next thing I'm going to talk about is police. They don't seem to know the rules of the DMV smog referees on extensions on license. I keep getting tickets from these boys. I go to court and I win. Then, the worst part of it all, on Fourth Street, I'll go anywhere, anytime, and Chief Pitts knows it, I get pulled over, they run my plate on my BMW wrong, come back stolen Toyota, they pull guns on me, seven officers jumped me. They didn't tow my car that time. And then they give me a thousand dollar fine for scaring the police. Me by myself, no weapons, they have seven guns. Something's wrong there. I think we're going to have to change that a little bit. I realized that in court, they made a mistake, they ran the plate wrong. So they were in the mode of stolen Toyota plate. Maybe the plate come off of a Toyota? I don't know. But anyway, the last thing, how's my time? I'm doing okay. I noticed there's a real good apartment down by Vassar that they're doing a heck of a job for seniors and vets. I think it's Colonial. The rent's real reasonable, very clean, and they do a better job than anything I've seen. And the rent's about forty percent cheaper. Colonial apartments, I think a lot of people, young people of low income should know that. And then I found out, too, that I go to a lot of meetings, they talk about transportation, they talk about transportation, but Sparks Senior Center don't even have bus service. It's not your problem. But I think they got a, there's a lot of little problems. Recently here, I got four crosswalks painted in Sparks. The city council member should have done that. I shouldn't have even had to do it. That's where the little girl got hit a couple of years ago, in a roundabout. Now I'm working on the no right turn for trucks so they don't go out and go down and get hung up on the roundabout. So all these things can be fixed. Like this guy over here, I think he addressed the issue. He probably has a list of twenty things he wants to do in his area. That's what has to happen. All these problems are real small. I decided to give up, so I bought a house in Virginia City. I'm keeping one here, too, because that's where the laws originated, and I coached by a lawyer up there, and I'm going back to law school right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Donna Clotz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The senior advisory board is on the agenda at item H1, and we've asked quite a few of our senior advocates to come with us for this item. And on their behalf, I'll just say, we appreciate all the support that we've gotten from our council for all these many months. This is our time for this year's budget items that you have given to us to go out to the community, and so you've got a staff report for that, and we appreciate your support on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Donna, thank you for always coming to these meetings and advocating on behalf of seniors. Always appreciate hearing from you. Thank you.
Dick Bartholomew.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Klinger, this is a monthly report from the Regional Alliance for Downtown. Remember our tagline, every great city has a great downtown. On May 22nd, from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m., we will be hosting a candidate forum for city council candidates at Silver Legacy in conjunction with NEOP. The next RAD general membership meeting, and it's open to non-members as well, will be Thursday, June 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The title of this will be Reno's History Goes High Tech with Alicia Barber as the presenter. And as you know, she played a key role in developing, well, she's an historian and played a key role in helping get the development of that app. Our Life and Culture Committee has a subcommittee that started having conversations with Circa Circus probably about six or seven months ago, and now Circus is planning a mural competition in July as an Art Town event. They've actually submitted their event, and it's on the Art Town, will be on the Art Town calendar, I believe. They're still working on important details, and I'm not going to steal their thunder other than just the teaser that I gave you, but there'll be more details to come. Our Economic Influence Committee is working on, again, promoting the districts in downtown, and I spoke with Jason Hidalgo yesterday. Very likely, there will be an article this weekend on downtown districts. Our goal is to get the various districts communicating with each other, cooperating, and hopefully collaborating under the premise that a rising tide lifts all boats. And finally, our Safe and Clean Committee continues to implement a good neighbor agreement and to identify downtown issues and potential solutions. That's your update. Thanks.
I'm a property owner on 424 East Fourth Street. I'm here to ask the city to take a step back. Oh, my goodness. Just lost it. I'm here to ask the city to take a step back and comply with the legal requirements before expanding the tax district. Before, I am not opposed, I am not opposed to considering expanding the tax district, but I'd like any expansion to comply with the law. The city failed to provide notice, my right to vote for or against the expansion, and show the services provided will be additional to my normal services. I'm anxious to hear valid reasons for the expansion because the police's use of the homeless center to justify the expansion is like blaming, blaming the bank and not the robber when it gets robbed. The Nevada state law also requires other requirements, which parts expanded the district would likely comply with. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and councilmen and women, I'm Wayne Alexander, and I'm a 34-year resident of the city of Sparks. I'm on the Washoe County Senior Advisory Board, and I'd like to take this time to thank you for the support and funding you've given to senior projects in the past. As a Sparks resident, I use the Reno programs, for example, the senior games, as a senior, and I would appreciate it and ask that you continue to support the seniors in the city of Reno and Washoe County. Thank you.
Alicia Dixon. I defer to Donna Clotz in support of the senior advisory.
All right, thank you very much.
Esteemed Mayor, city council members, Manager Klinger, Clerk Jones, and Mr. Henry in Abstentia, I'm Billy Howard, former Chair of the Reno Citizens Advisory Board, Ward Two South, and graduate of the Reno Citizens Institute with special honors with an update on the Puppy Milk Free Reno campaign. As of this morning, we have 7,933 signatures. Of which, let's see, we have, last week I showed Ms. Jones the process for which I vet the online signatures, of which she enthusiastically approved. This is a local form that I created and programmed myself. It's not part of a large portal like Change2 or Care2. I dump all the data into a database, and I'm able to crunch the numbers and come up with analytics, which I will provide for you in a sheet later on in the day. I make sure there are no duplicates. I capture the IP address of the sender to make sure no one is loading signatures by putting in many names. I'm happy to report that that has not occurred. I can tell you that of the total numbers of signatures we've gathered, eighty-four percent are from northern Nevada. If you were to break it out to include, or if I were to break it out to include all of the Lake Tahoe area and some of the eastern California towns like Quincy who come to Reno to shop, the number would be upwards of ninety percent. All those signatures are sourced from the local regional area. As of this morning, I have sixty-eight business organizations and political candidates that have endorsed Puppy Milk Free Reno, including local candidates. I just started the page last night for the local candidates, and we already have four people, including Ms. Hillary Sheevy for mayor, Eric Holland for mayor, and Chuck Allen for sheriff. I will submit in the next week or two a thumb drive of the spreadsheet of all the online signatures. Some people have made comments when they signed, which are directly addressed to you in the decision-making of this initiative. I offered to meet with any council members to speak about this issue and any concerns or clarity I might be able to lend. I'm meeting with Ms. Jordan tomorrow, and I will drop off these hard copy signatures to the clerk, which she will hold for you, and you can take a look at them and thumb through them if you like. Thank you again for your consideration in this matter. We hope we have a unanimous vote in Reno, just like the ones in Chicago, Cook County, Phoenix, Los Angeles, and San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Markell.
Oops, sorry. Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople and manager. Hi, my name is Mark Markell, and my mission in life is to educate students in the community about what happens when someone gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading this because I suffer a traumatic brain injury and get off track. Through Mark's pad, people that get drunk driving, I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences that I have. I had a car crash and rolled eight times. I was not wearing my seatbelt. It wasn't mandatory back then. I was ejected and the car landed on my head. I was in a coma for a month and in the hospital five and a half months more. Once I regained consciousness, I had to learn to talk, walk, and even eat. Once I, oh, fuck, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir. All, 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 all over again due to my traumatic brain injury. I can't do everyday tasks. I walk with a walker and have to take the bus everywhere, which is a bad thing. My life has completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Parents don't drive drunk with your kids in the car. Don't drive drunk at all. Kids, listen to your parents. They were young once, and listen to your teachers. They just want to make good decisions of you. They're there to help. I never listened to either one and look what happened to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good message.
Thank you.
Mr. Sam Diney.
First of all, I want everybody to know in this room that Sam Diney, that's me, has never received a thank you from these people on the dais, and I take that as a supreme compliment, because I'm not here to kiss any butt of Fucos, I'm here to tell the truth. I'm Sam Diney, the encyclopedia of Reno government and Reno's legendary government watchdog with 5,427 public testimonies warning them and advising them of how to run the city properly. How's that working out? Not so good. I'm also the father of Reno's next mayor, and don't get me confused as the father of Ms. Sheevy up there. Nope. I'm the, nice chortle. I'm the father of that Marine Corps veteran. I'm the father of that, yeah, I got to you, didn't I, Mr. Mayor? I'm the father of that Marine. Would you stop the clock for a few minutes, please? What was that?
No, it's very few questions.
There you go. See, did he butt in on anybody else and not give them extra time? That's okay. I live with this. Four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven times, so be it. I'm here, I'm the father of that Marine Corps veteran with, who already has 21,000 loyal Reno voters who have already voted for him to be Reno mayor, and that wasn't against this nobody, that was against the mighty Bob Kachel and a hall of his gigantic entourage that he brought to the election last time. This young man, Diney, he has 21,000 votes, but the Reno Gazette, and by the way, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I've been to every one of these meetings since, most of you kids were in, most of you people were kids. At any rate, so I know what I'm talking about. This Marine Corps veteran is feared and envied by the media and especially the mendacious, perverted, deceptive, rotten, evil, wicked Reno Gazette newspaper. At any rate, I'm here to talk a little bit about that. This, this latest ballot stuffing, ballot stuffing Ponzi scheme that the Reno Gazette is working on as if they were the ones who should decide who should be Reno mayor. No, they, anybody, anybody who they say should be Reno mayor should be at the bottom of the list, and if any of these quote unquote "top contenders," top ten contenders, have any gumption, moxie, honesty in their souls, they would boycott this Ponzi scheme being perpetrated by the world's most disgusting newspaper. And even the city attorney over there is shaking his head at the disgusting aspect of this Reno Gazette newspaper being run. Oh, the main reason we want to get Diney in as the mayor is because proverb number two on his Bible right here, proverb number two is dismantle the Reno Gazette. That's dismantle as in when you've got a home with, everything in is going rotten, you get rid of the rotten stuff, like the Reno Gazette has. Get rid of the rotten stuff and bring in some good stuff that will tell the truth and report the truth so that the city of Reno will not, will not, will no longer be de facto bankrupt.
Now we'll go to the city legislatures report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind the council and the public that our budget adoption hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, May 20th. The time will remain at 1:30, as was set by council at our last meeting. However, the public hearing for the special assessment district will remain at 3:00 p.m. due to the advertising that we did for that time. Also want to remind everyone and encourage folks to come out. Tomorrow is the mayoral challenge ride. The ride will take place tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Public is encouraged to ride along. Myself, Mayor Kachel, and others from the city of Reno, city of Sparks, and Washoe County will pedal in a leisurely, leisurely ride from Sparks City Hall to the Terry Lee Wells Nevada Discovery Museum in downtown. The ride will end at approximately 10:30, if we make it by 10:30. The bike, the bike that we'll be, we will be riding is the Moon Buggy that was built by Washoe County School District's Academy of Arts, Careers, and Technology, and this year we're riding uphill, so I'm looking for anybody who wants to be a reliever.
There will no be any relievers.
The, the day's events will continue with the Ride for Reading sponsored by the Washoe County School District, starting at 11:00. You can get more information on this by visiting bikenevada.org. And one final announcement is the University of Nevada commencement. The spring 2014 commencement ceremonies for the University of Nevada will be held this Friday and Saturday, starting at 8:00 a.m. In our further, furthering our commitment to connecting downtown Reno to the university, we'd like to congratulate these latest graduates on their accomplishments, and we hope they stay here in the biggest little city to begin their careers. It's also my understanding that Councilman Delgado will be speaking to the graduates of the School of Social Work as well.
Super. Congratulations. That's good. Thank you. Bicycle.
I can't ride a bike. I'm a year old.
Well, then you get to walk, sir. You can walk with us. You've got four wheels. Stay up with us, please.
No, I can't do it.
Anyway, the Moon Buggy that we're riding, Mr. Klinger is my driver. Mr. Klinger is faced this way, I'm faced in the back, and the Moon, the Moon Buggy won NASA's competition right here in Reno, Nevada, the school over on, uh...
Apple.
Where?
Echo Loader.
Echo Loader?
The Edison Way.
Mr. Mayor, it is the Academy of Arts, Careers, and Technology.
They won, they won the competition with other kids throughout the United States for the NASA award, and they let us use it last year. They're letting us use it again this year. The seat that the mayor has is a little more comfortable than it was last year, and my driver is Mr. Klinger. He is the front peddler. He cannot see behind to see what I'm doing, but I brought, I bought and brought a whip to make sure he keeps going faster. Please have an ambulance stationed somewhere in the vicinity.
For Andrew?
Yeah.
For Andrew. Not me, not me. I won't need one. No, no. Jim, you've already told all these guys. You know, Jim told the guys over at Remza, if they find me passed out, they're supposed to do this. Goodbye, Bob. You know, and instead of giving me, I'm glad they're not giving me a mouth-to-mouth list, that's one of the other ladies.
Mr. Mayor.
Never mind, you won't either.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind you, it is a tandem buggy, so there are pedals on your side as well.
I thought those were for me to rest my legs on. Anyway, come out and join us, we're going to have a lot of fun. All right, we're down to approval of the agenda. Item E3 has been pulled. Item J2 has been pulled. Public comment we've done, there'll be proclamations for National Bike and Bicycle Month, proclamation for National Public Works, emergency medical services, and Nevada Wildfire. Presentations, economic development. Item D1, D3 is Northeast Connector Project, and item D3 is Art Town. The public hearing this evening, there is not one. We will be having a joint meeting of the Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency at two items. We will open the meeting, and then the items to be continued would be item, excuse me, E1, Approval of Personal Property Sublease Agreement, Rink on the River, and item E2, Interlocal Lease Agreement, Rink on the River. Those would, those would be pulled, but we'll open them up and then pull them. Also, and that'll be continued, I'm sorry, till the 28th at 2:00. Then, I am going to move the consent agenda up before the proclamations and the presentations. Any changes, other changes you want to make or anything?
Do you approve that?
All right.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Motion.
Any items to pull for discussion?
I have a few, Mr. Mayor. Item E2.
E2.
And item, let's see, you said E3 was pulled?
Yes.
So I also have E11.
E11.
E12, and E14.
Any others to be pulled for discussion?
You can adjourn. You can follow these.
All right, have motion, have a second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, before I call for the rest of that vote, Mr. Diney wishes to say something.
Sam Diney, Reno's legendary government watchdog. And now you see why Sam never gets thanked for anything, as a matter of fact, sometimes they even try to ignore him. And that's not to cast any aspersions on our beloved mayor, Bob Kachel. At any rate, what we have here is the consent agenda that I had to look over very quickly because it was moved up, way, way, way up into the agenda, and I wasn't quite prepared to speak on it. But I think I'll be able to figure something out here to talk about, because there's always something on the consent agenda that's worth talking about. As a matter of fact, for the folks out there and out in Sam Diney's, watching Sam Diney's YouTube channel, the consent agenda is a situation where they're just going to vote on a whole bunch of stuff, all in one vote unless they take something off like they took, just did, take a few off. Normally, you'd think consent agenda would, and I'm just speaking generally on the concept of, consent agenda is a great idea because these people have very important lives to lead and things going up, on up on the 15th floor over there, the caviar's getting cold, champagne's probably melting. At any rate, consent agenda should actually be things that are like housekeeping and just, you know, rubber stamp things. Well, you take a look on here, for those who bothered, here's something, a million and a half dollars, that's not even going to see the light. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars will not be seeing the light. They'll just vote yes or no, or actually, they'll vote to approve it. Here's a whole bunch of stuff. I can't even add up all this money, it looks like maybe a half a million dollars, and so on and on and on, but I'm not trying to be a curmudgeon here. Oh, here's another one, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy thousand. Oh, here's another one, 350, 370,000. The one that I was wondering about is this approval of an amendment to the short-term lease agreement to give for the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course. And that theoretically is sort of taking the stance that this freeway through the middle of that operation over there, which will take aside many, many, many homes of citizens, probably either through buying them out or eminent domain, and he's showing, no, it's not going to happen. I might be looking into the future a little bit on this. This is just a plan and a scheme that they have that hopefully will never take place, and the mayor's shaking his head, and I hope it doesn't take place. But we've got these things going on here on that Rosewood Lake thing that needs to be looked at, and unfortunately, the citizens who oppose this, guess what? They work for a living and they have a hard time coming down here. They're not like, they're not like Sam, Sam Danae, that's me, is independently poor. Just enough money set aside so I can take the time to come down here and try to warn the citizens about the problems in the community. And, and Mr. Mayor, there's a lot more to this story, but the times run out.
Thank you. All right. Now we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we will go to item E2. Ms. Brackus.
Staff, could you show us what this action involves? Little staff report on, on what we're doing here, and particularly what part of the valley we're talking about with this new community that's being approved, that's being proposed today?
Turn close, senior planner. This is the Evans Ranch PUD area. They're adding a 40-acre piece right in this area here. So basically, it's on the northwest corner of the state airport where the project begins, and it extends about three miles to the west of that. It's about three, three, three and a half square miles.
How far, just for, you know, trying to understand where the city boundaries lie, I'm trying to figure that one out. And in terms also of where our fire station is located, the stead fire station is going to respond to this area?
Correct.
What, can, can you identify where the stead fire station is? Okay, what, how, how many miles is that? Or how would you get from the stead fire station up to this new community? And how many units is it again?
5,600 plus.
5,600, about the size of Somerset or so in terms of units?
Actually, for a number of units, it's probably about a third larger.
Than Somerset? Okay.
You didn't say 5,600, did you?
5,600.
Okay, I tried that.
5,556, and they added, it's about, plus 123.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and how do you get from stead fire station to this property here?
You go out Echo Avenue, and then the applicant will build an extension of Echo Avenue into the Silver Knowles subdivision, and then that would go through and connect to Red Rock, and then up to the entrance to the development, which would be a road built over here by the developer into the...
Okay.
And aren't they going to build a station too?
At, with the 1,700 unit, they will build a fire station in the development also. So basically, the fire service would be provided for the first third or so of the project from the stead station, and with this amendment, that roadway is part of the agreement and requirements of the, of the project.
Okay, so tell me this, I know it was made able to annex because a little corner touched the city up in that, you know, further up, but now this revision involves generating the traffic through Silver Knowles, right? And through Military Road is proposed to be expanded? Is that, is that part of this?
Not, not Military Road, Red Rock.
Red Rock Road.
And the only, the only, the only extension through the Silver Knowles is the fire access road. The rest of it is up Red Rock as originally proposed. All the widenings and traffic improvements were based on the original approval. We're just adding less than 2% more units to the original project. So all of those standards, requirements are contained in Exhibit B, and they've been modified to recollect, reflect the increased numbers.
Okay, so Silver Knowles is an unincorporated community. Is the right of way reserved through there, or?
The applicant owns the property through which the road would be extended on Echo Ave to the, to the street in, I don't know, I can't remember what the name of the street is, but the street in Silver Knowles, and then they would go through Silver Knowles and connect to Red Rock and then up Red Rock.
So, okay, so if the city doesn't annex Silver Knowles by then, it'll be up to the county's permitting process then to permit this new road and accept this new road and, and then even accept the improvements up Red Rock Road, because those are unincorporated lands, correct?
All, all of the, because Red Rock provides a primary access to the, to the property, all the improvements that were related to expanding the road are in, are requirements in the PUD. So as they progress through building certain numbers of units, they have to readdress the traffic and impact numbers and make the improvements to the road as necessary.
But how did, is the county a party to this agreement? Is the county saying, yes, we're going to let you build a road through our neighborhood? Yes, we want to prioritize Red Rock Road as a, you know, an arterial on...
It's on, it's on the regional, on the RT, Regional Impact or Regional RTC, Regional Road Program, and it's, they have to enter into an agreement with RTC to make those improvements.
Okay.
And again, as the project progresses, those things are staged based on the number of units, 25, 50, 75, 90%.
Okay, and then on the noticing, were the Silver Knowles residents noticed of this amendment?
I do not believe they're within the 750-foot range.
Okay, even though the road's going to go through, the new road. And then is this a project of regional significance?
It was when it was originally approved.
Okay, but we don't know that it's going up to regional at this time then?
No, it will not. Because it's...
It was approved three or four years ago.
It was approved in '08 as a project of regional significance, and because they're not, they're only increasing the number of units by less than 2%, they have to increase it by over 10% to re-trigger a project of regional significance. All the water, sewer, traffic, all those issues were reviewed when this thing went to, when this project went to regional.
Well, I see some substantive revisions that involve the traffic impacts that are regional neighbor, nature if they're impacting unincorporated neighborhoods. But I want to ask you another question about some of this agreements. There's a, a reference to a public facility agreement with the city for a fire station and a police department, or if we have impact fees. And I'm just trying to get a sense on the reading. What is a public facility agreement? Is that the same as a development agreement, do you think, or?
Didn't we cover this at the last meeting?
Well, I'm just trying to take us, yeah, and is it a development, is it a development agreement?
It's an agreement to provide certain aspects of fire protection, a site, facilities, equipment, and the timing thereof.
Okay.
And that can be done that way, or with this amendment, they're allowed to do it through a development agreement if they so choose to use that method.
Okay, and I guess my question is, anything in here goes away, like the CAFER front-loading agreement for impact fees, or this facility agreement is seen as an instrument not recognized by, you know, statute as a power the city has? Does then that tilt in favor of the city, or does it tilt in favor of the vested rights of this developer? Do you, how do you read that?
Could you repeat that question?
Well, say, you know, what I hear the need for a lot of this revision is, is because of the fire divorce. So now it's on our onus to kind of work, and we're stretching our responses for us to serve this area. And I guess what I'm saying is, say, in the future, some things go away, some of the instruments that we're basing this upon, whether financing or what, whether it's regional road impact fees, or this fire agreement goes away, how does that impact their vested rights? If it says you have to enter into a fire agreement, and there's no such thing as a fire agreement, or you have to have regional...
It's, all of these are requirements of the PUD right now. Whether this amendment gets approved or not, all of those aspects were contained in the original approval. So all, all, all we're really doing with this, or not, one of the aspects that we're accomplishing with this is actually improving the fire access and response to the site based on deconsolidation, because we don't have the fire station up in Cold Springs.
Well, you act...
So, so what this does is allow, it makes the situation better than it is based on the result of deconsolidation.
You're acting like this is a simple thing, but I think this is a commitment to 5,000 residential units, a commitment to serve these residential units in an area far outside of our reaches of services currently. And so I'm trying to understand, because there's a number of implementing tools in here, agreements, financing mechanisms that need to be in place. And if some of these don't exist, there's not the authority for them, I, and I'm looking for your opinion, is what happens? Do we just have to then enter into a new agreement, make something up, let it slide? How, how would you read that?
Well, it's a requirement of the PUD, and for them to move forward with building it, they have to comply with those requirements. If they don't, it stops.
Okay.
There are provisions in both the public safety agreement and in the parks that if they don't follow through on anything, we can stop issuing building permits, and they have 15 days to redress those, those deficiencies.
But they have to enter into this agreement. Those aren't agreed to at this point?
No, the, the...
If they don't do what they're supposed to, this, it kills it.
Or if the city refuses to enter into these agreements at a later date, because it's outside of our capacity to serve.
Well, I don't think we can refuse to enter into these at a future date. We're, we're agreeing.
We've agreed to it.
Yeah, we've agreed to it.
Well, no, we agree to, and we agree that there will be a mechanism if it's, if we enter, if we reach agreement, if a future council reaches agreement on these other implementing steps, then it, then it goes forward.
And, and all of the things that you're asking questions about that you've asked the last time this was before us, you're getting the same answers. And, and we approved it then, alls we're doing is certifying, certifying the handbook today.
Yes, and I'll...
I mean, this, this, I mean, these are the same questions you asked a month ago when this was before us, and you're getting the same answers.
This was before us in December. This was before the council, before in 2006. It's a fundamental...
2008 was when the original project was approved.
2008. It's a, it's a fundamental development mistake. The city's taken on a lot of liability to extend this far out through unincorporated lands. We're bringing on a huge liability when we have 20, 22,000 lots of some form of development approval or readiness already. It's very premature development. It's probably a poster child for classic suburban sprawl. So I'll be opposing this. Yes, thank you.
That's your opinion. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No.
Motion carries unanimously. Six, or five, one. Item E11, Ms. Brackus.
E11. Oh. This is that catalyst agreement again?
Yeah, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy Secretary of Transit.
And I guess I remain concerned about the city's risk in, in entering into this agreement with GOED, but what is this amendment proposed to do?
This is a cleanup item. We talked about it when I think the Garlock printing came. We had this specific provision in that agreement, which essentially makes it a nonrecourse type of situation for the city. So if in fact a court were to come back and rule the entire catalyst program unconstitutional, and if monies at that point had been dispersed to Lincoln Cutting by the city, the state could not come after the city for repayment of those funds. So that's what this does. It's, it's just a cleanup item.
But the state, but we're out the funds then, because...
No, we're not out the funds. It's, it's, it's state funding.
Will the state have already passed through the funds to us then?
Yes, so what, yeah, we get, we get the funding. The Lincoln Cutting, Cutting shows that it created the jobs that it's required to create. We reimburse them after the fact. So if, at some point after that reimbursement, a court comes along and said the catalyst program is not constitutional and it has to stop, at that point, the money's been dispersed. We can't get it back from Lincoln Cutting. The state can't get it from us, and that's all that this does.
Is the state going to defend us if we're sued and a party to this lawsuit under the constitutionality of the state program?
Well, we're not in, we're not in that lawsuit currently. Um, I, you know, so...
GOED's in the lawsuit.
Yeah, GOED, yeah, the state is in it.
Okay. Well, I'm still not going to support this because I don't think it is constitutional for us to be engaged in this.
Second.
Have a motion, second.
No. No.
Show the vote, five, one.
And I'll just...
Now we go to E12.
And I oppose that one also.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
No, no, I voted no.
Excuse me, there's five, one again.
Okay.
Show me above. Now we go to E14.
Mr. Shipman.
Yeah.
Can you explain what we're doing here?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm really looking for just a little elaboration, if the rest of the council would indulge, on the Goldman Sachs litigation. I think, you know, it's one of those issues that's longstanding, going to go on, but a lot of the discussion on it is in our attorney-client meetings. So can you explain what we're doing and what...
Yeah, this, this again, this item is another housekeeping item. And as, I mean, what, what has happened is that the firm, Fishman, Haygood, Phelps, Wamsley, Willis, and Swanson, you know, back in December of 2000, or back in April, in October of 2013, they withdrew as council of record. So Jill Pfeiffer was their primary counsel with that firm. He continued on as council of record, but he, and started his own firm. So now this is just a cleanup item to include that firm, Pfeiffer, Rozier, Abdullah, Carr, and Kane in our attorney-client agreement so that it flows through to them as well.
And the, the nature of the dispute is on the auction rate securities?
This is on the auction rate securities, the fraud claims that the city has relative to the, the event center refinancing and...
And the trench.
And the trench.
And the trench.
Yeah.
And, and, and we're in front of the Ninth Circuit on this.
Correct. The, the case is currently, there was an appeal by Goldman Sachs. There was a venue order, you know, whether or not it was going to be suitable for arbitration. That, the, the district court came and said, yes, it would go through the FINRA process. That was appealed. Now it's in the Ninth Circuit. An order came back saying that it needs to go to the district court, so now we're in the process of getting that resolved.
Okay, so it's a procedural dispute right now, but what it's at stake is the 1/8 countywide, so it's one region, one countywide, 8-cent sales tax, right?
Yeah, this, this goes to the, the actual, the bonding of it and whether or not Goldman committed fraud when they sold bonds, and the city participated in that sale, so that when the markets went upside down back in the 2008, 2009 timeframe, the market for these bonds went away and the interest went way up. And so that's part of the damage claim that we have against Goldman Sachs is because of the way this was set up, we were misled, and there was fraud. So that's essentially what the claim is.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but a couple of cities have already done this with them.
Yes, there's, yes, there's a number of cities that have instituted this. There was a first wave, which was kind of the bondholders sued a lot of these companies. Now, the second wave is a lot of the issuers that have come back and if...
And the recovery is upwards of hoping to save the regional sales taxpayers about a million, $100 million over the next 40, 50 years, right? I mean, it goes that far and that heavy in the finances?
I think the bond is that much, but I mean, the damage claims, I think, are not on that level. I mean, it more, yeah, they're, they're in the millions of dollars, but it's not for the entire bond.
But, but a relief from this could prevent this 1/8 sales tax that everyone's paying every day to go toward those bonds and reallocate to another purpose, correct?
Oh, no, no, this is really more, in the issuance of securities, certain steps, certain things were done that amounted to fraud is the claim. And so to the extent that that, we were damaged by that, we get money back for that. It's in the millions of dollars, but it's not, it's not going to relieve the county of a $100 million tax payment. of a $100 million tax payment.
Okay, the 1/8 sales tax will just keep rolling-
That's-
-for a long time.
Correct.
Okay, but-
Whatever we save, we could put towards those notes if we wanted to.
Whatever we recover, we could defees.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you, and I'll support this, motion.
Thanks.
You want to make a motion? All right, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll approve, yeah, I'll, I'll approve the joint ones, but I have a question, it has all the county commissioners' names up front.
Let me get a second on the motion.
Okay.
Second, second, now go ahead.
It has all the county commissioners' names on the minutes, not our names? It's a little confusing, I am directing this to you.
Okay, I'll change it.
Yeah, I think, don't, don't you think?
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaserino, City Attorney's Office, that was a concurrent meeting, so Councilmember, member Breckus is right, it should reflect that it's the minutes of this city council.
Okay. And then I'll also, oh, okay.
Would those changes?
Yeah.
Would the changes, I'd have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersments, item B1.
Wait, we have another set.
The second minutes.
Oh, we need to do April 30. Chair will entertain a motion on April 30th, may the-
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersments, any disqualifications or anything? Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
So, move.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll do proclamations, National Bike and Bicycle Safety Month.
Do you have the presentation by chance?
MJ.
Hi.
Presentation by chance? Presentation, oh, um, let me do the proclamation first, okay, okay, thank you. Whereas the bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation, and whereas there is a need to promote alternative forms of transportation such as walking and bicycling in order to reduce pollution, reduce traffic congestion, reduce America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of our citizens, whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, reduce pollution and congestion, and stimulate economic growth, whereas millions will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of May through educational and safety programs, community events, or just going out and going for a ride, and whereas the bike paths and trails of Washoe County in Reno attract thousands of bicyclists each year from around the region, providing economic health and scenic benefits to all, whereas these bicycling activities, activities and attractions have potential to have a positive impact on our economy and tourism industry, and to stimulate economic development by making the region attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the outdoors of healthy lifestyles, and whereas the education of bicyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas May has been declared National Bike Month for each of the last 50 years, therefore, I, Jenny Breckus, on behalf of Mayor Kachel and the other city council members, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as National Bike and Bicycle Safety Month, and May 10 through 16, 2014, as Bike to Work, School, and Fun Week. And here to accept this proclamation is MJ Cloud from Washoe County School Districts, who has the great responsibility and pleasure of working with our school-aged children to let them learn, know bicycle safety that they can carry through their lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Julie Hunter did have a prior engagement, and she had to leave. She was here representing the Air Quality Management Division, who is highly involved with the Truckee Meadows Bike Alliance, with Safe Routes to School, and with the local bike projects, with the local bike activists, RTC, REMZA. We've all come together, and in the last couple of years, have made huge strides in the whole community for bike safety, teaching the children, as well as teaching the adults to trust their children. As we already went over in great detail, thank you, City Manager Klinger, tomorrow's ride, I'm very much looking forward to, in the afternoon after the Discovery Museum, is where everyone will load up their backpacks, and that's the part where we'll ride to Echo Loader on Apple Street, and we'll donate those books to the children. Safe Routes to School with Read to Succeed has raised over 1,200 books, so we're really proud to be able to give those kids those, and something different for that is, they will be able to take those books home. This is the first Northern Nevada Ride for Reading, and when I first started being involved with Ride for Reading, the one thing that lit the fire was hearing the number, that the number of children who have a grade-specific appropriate book in their home is 1 in 300. And when I heard that, I, I couldn't exactly even relate or understand, but that has spurred it, and here we are for our very first Ride for Reading in Northern Nevada. So, I appreciate all your support, and not only do we have the big ride tomorrow, we also have on Friday, there will be 200, 200 students will be wearing these, you won't be able to miss them, and it's a Tour de Slurpee t-shirt that I didn't even know they were doing until yesterday, they presented it to me. They have over 100 bikes in their bike rack yesterday, and they're expecting close to 200 to be riding together from Cold Springs Middle School to 7-Eleven, hence the Tour de Slurpee, and then back. So, to have that many kids on the road, they'll then be learning an older, an older child's law of taking the lane, riding three abreast, and learning the responsibilities of taking a lane, not just staying in the bike lane or on the sidewalk like the younger kids. So, I very much appreciate the city, I appreciate everybody who's involved, and I look forward to a safe and fun week. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Mayor's National Public Works Week proclamation.
Is this the proclamation where we get the curb trended and stuff like that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, council, I have the honor here to present the National Public Works Week to our director here, Mr. Flansburgh. Whereas public works infrastructure facilitates, facilities and services are of critical importance to the health, safety, and well-being and livelihood of our residents, visitors, and commerce, and whereas the year 2014 marks the 54th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas the year 2014 National Public Works Week theme, Building for Today, Planning for Tomorrow, recognizes that we do, what we do today is vital to the sustainable and vibrant tomorrow, and whereas public works plays a key role in planning, building, and maintenance of infrastructure projects in their communities, and that will allow future generations to enjoy a higher quality of life, and whereas the support of under, of understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works, systems, and programs for streets, sewer collection and treatment, stormwater management and quality and quantity, and public buildings, and whereas public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees are vitally important to the planning, designing, building, and operation and maintenance of these facilities, and whereas the city of Reno deeply appreciates the important contributions the public services profession has made to our city and to the progress of our community. Now, therefore, I, Oscar Doggad, on behalf of Mayor Kachel and the rest of the City, Reno City Council, do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th, 2014, as National Public Works Week.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, John Flansburgh, Director, I want to just say it's honor to represent the men and women of Public Works, but I'd be remiss if I didn't also recognize our community partners, our design professionals, consulting firms, and our contractors, who together, we are able to build the foundation that community happens. And so, we, we like to be in the shadows and just make sure that when things are going well, we, we don't get recognized, so we appreciate this recognition, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve the citizens of Reno. Thank you.
Mr. Flansburgh, congratulations to you and your staff, y'all do an outstanding job in this community, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sam Denei.
Sam Denei, the Encyclopedia Reno Government and Reno's legendary government watchdog. I call myself legendary, because 5,000, 4,427 public testimonies is a legendary thing for a person to do. At any rate, I, I'll be very brief, I'm very happy to come to the podium and say something good. Government was created to protect the citizens, and we have the, the firefighters, and we have the law enforcement there, number one and two, but number three, right behind them has to be public works. Most people don't pay much attention to public works, but without public works, we would have a really, really tough time having anything good happening in our community. So, these fellows, these people, these men and women, definitely deserve a heavy-duty kudos, like the mayor just gave them. As a matter of fact, I would like to speak in favor of all four of these proclamations, the one for the fire department, and one for the emergency services, REMZA folks back here, because they go out there and they save lives. The fire department performed miracles a couple of years ago, and then they got disbanded and separated, and now we're back to things being maybe even worse than they were way before they were, things were going on. At any rate, I support all of these proclamations, and I especially support the public works people, who do not get enough credit.
Thank you very much. Item C3, medical emergency. Who's doing that one? Oh, Sharon is.
We're assembling the team that does indeed care for us year in and year out. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to the quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injury, and the emergency medical services system consists of a public safety, dispatchers, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and the commitment of all first responders to patient care throughout Northern Nevada has been an integral factor in our community's safety, security, and success. Whereas the region is proud to have all first responders operating within the region to ensure the highest quality of patient care and community support, and it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by Designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Zadr, for our mayor, Robert A. Kachel, and the rest of the city council, do hereby proclaim this week of May 18 through 24 as Emergency Medical Services Week. And accepting for the whole group will be Jim Goobles.
Mr. Mayor and council, for the record, Jim Goobles, President of REMZA and Care Flight, it is a pleasure to accept us on behalf of the staff of REMZA and Care Flight, and we will certainly pass this proclamation, and we thank you for that. It takes a team to provide emergency care for the citizens of Reno. That team includes law enforcement, who should also step forward today, I know we have some of our officers there, along with the Reno Fire Department, along with REMZA, along with Care Flight, for the care and safety of this community. We appreciate this recognition, and thank you.
Thank you, and thanks, REMZA, for everything y'all do in the community. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
All these tall people. Wildfire significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being, and residents of Nevada fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas, and residents must be encouraged to move from the expectation of being protected from wildfire to understanding that they must be prepared to survive, to survive wildfire, and to do so, they need to acquire the knowledge and skills to prepare their homes to survive wildfire and take action. And by keeping in mind this year's theme, Prepare Your Home for Wildfire, residents and property owners need to become educated on how to do their part to keep the threat of devastating wildfires away from their property and community. Therefore, I, Robert A. Kachel, do I look like you? Hillary Shiebe, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, proclaim May 2014 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month. Congratulations, you guys.
All you.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Fire Department, Michael Hernandez, Fire Chief, just this morning, at approximately 9:00 a.m., the Bureau of Land Management, the National Interagency Coordination Center, raised our awareness level from level one to level two, which is a heightened awareness level, wildfire season is upon us. That increase in awareness at that level means that there are significant fires burning in multiple regions. I know that we've got several wildfires burning in the Southern California area. Here to speak to our education efforts for the region is Sonia Syster with the Living with Fire Educational Campaign.
Could you put, can we put it on the, on the thing? I don't know which way that goes. Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Sonia Syster with the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension. We've been coordinating Wildfire Awareness Month, well, actually, it started out as Wildfire Awareness Week since 2006, and with the increase in the wildfire threat and the increase in the number of homes being built in the wildland urban interface, we've collectively decided to make it the whole month of May, so this is the first year, and it's been pretty action-packed, even with fires in California to help drive the message home. So, as you can see from our theme this year, that we're trying to convince homeowners that they need to prepare their homes to survive wildfire, that they cannot count on a fire engine to be parked in their driveway every home during a wildfire, that just doesn't happen, and, and can't happen with limited resources. So, through our educational publications that we produce through the University of Nevada Reno, and with our partners, including the City of Reno Fire Department, we're getting the message out, and hoping that people are, are taking action. And just one example, on Saturday, we hosted, along with Nevada Division of Forestry and our Fire Department partners, a Junk the Junipers event out on, on East Lake, and we had 67 homes participate, and I can't, I wish I could measure how much wildfire fuels they dropped off, but some people returned five and six times to drop off things to make their home more safe for wildfire, so it was very successful, and thank you for that. And, and we have a little reminder for all of you, it's a jar grip, for those who can't open pickle jars, with our message on it and our, and our website, so every time you grab this jar opener, which also doubles as a garlic peeler, you'll remember our message and make sure your home is safe from wildfire, because as we know with the call on fire, it can hit right here in the city. So, thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And chief, thank you, and the Fire Department for all y'all do, and all the men and women, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, now we move over to ordinance adoption. Presentations? Oh, did I skip?
D11.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Support of the council's priority to promote a vibrant economy and livable neighborhoods, each meeting, as you know, we invite local businesses, entrepreneurs, and people active in the community to present their success- And the goal of this, of this event is really to change the conversation about Fourth Street from what the H is happening down there to positive things are happening. Businesses are starting to take root, and the public's returning to Fourth Street. These businesses include the Reno Bike Project, Cuddle Works Artist Studio, Under the Rose Brewery, Valley Art, and the Depot Restaurant and Brewery. This event will bring a variety of new elements to Fourth Street to further the momentum that these businesses have brought to the area. They include a better block demonstration, a temporary facelift for the block to demonstrate what is possible with continued economic and community investment, a pop-up restaurant with local chef Mark Esti serving brunch and dinner, Reno Bike Project's bike swap, kids' activities, a beer garden, a farmer's market, historical tours hosted by RTC, and a concert by the String Beans Quartet. We want to thank you for your sponsorship, particularly Ms. Breckus, Ms. Jarden, and the Special Events Sponsorship Committee for your support, and invite you all to come and attend this event, and we look forward to seeing you there. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you very much. Good job. Keep Fourth Street going. Pyramid Highway 395. All right, here we go.
While she's pulling that up for the record, Doug Malloy, RTC project member, project manager, members of the council and mayor. I'm here today to provide, as the staff report indicates, a presentation on the U.S., excuse me, Pyramid Highway and U.S. 395 Connection Project. This is a regional project. The reference, for the record, of northeast connector, we've not referred to that, this project, is the Pyramid Highway and U.S. 395 Connection Project, serving the northeast Truckee Meadows. So this is a federally funded project. The RTC's been working closely with our partners, the Nevada Department of Transportation, who owns and operates the Pyramid Highway, the Federal Highway Administration, the authority, approval authority of the environmental impact statement that we've, that we've been preparing over the last six years. We've also partnered with the cities of Reno Sparks and Washto County and other BLM and other agencies as well. This facility does span all of the jurisdictions mentioned. The purpose and need of the project is to relieve congestion on Pyramid north of McCarran out to Caya de la Plata, and to provide some east-west connectivity between Pyramid and U.S. 395, relieving some congestion on McCarran as well. The purpose to be here today is also to, we have reached a milestone, and that is the selection of the preferred alternative that meets the purpose and need for this So just a little history, getting to this point. Back in 2001, we completed a corridor study that showed some needs on Pyramid, existing congestion, and projected out to the year 2035, some congestion and capacity needs as well. From that, we put some funding into our long-range transportation plan and developed some projects. We're taking forward this environmental impact statement now. It is a federally funded project with the impacts to the human and natural environment. An environmental impact statement is required, and that's what we're moving forward with. We looked at about 18 different alternatives to solve that purpose and need, and what I'm going to show you today is what the preferred alternative is. Some of those alternatives, just for your benefit, is turning some of these facilities, local streets like Sparks and Vista into freeways. And of course, this project is looking at freeway improvements. So we completed the draft EIS last fall, and as mentioned, the preferred alternative is where we're at today, and beginning the process of writing up the final EIS. So this slide shows an overview. It's approximately a 12-mile facility, as shown here, north to the top. Pyramid's running up and down on your page there, and then east and west, of course, is the connector, tying in at Par, Dandini. The traffic volumes projected show the need for a six-lane freeway with grade-separated interchanges at key locations, and I'll kind of zoom in on those here momentarily. The different lines represent different options, if you will, within this alternative. For your reference, as I mentioned, this spans three different jurisdictions. The blue shaded area there is an approximate showing of the Reno city limits, so a little west of Sun Valley, just north of Dandini, kind of are the boundaries that incorporate, of course, that interchange there at Par and U.S. 395. So this bubble shows three options. As I mentioned, this is one alternative. However, there are three options here within the Pyramid Corridor. We called, the first we looked at between Disc and Sparks Boulevard is the on alignment, and that's using the existing corridor. However, we would be, of course, turning it into a freeway, six lanes with interchanges at Los Altos and Goldenview, and then frontage roads, two-lane frontage roads on either side to provide local access along that facility. A large footprint and a large impact, as I'll show you here shortly. So we looked at a couple of different options in this location, and one would be to move it off that alignment, on the hillside, just to the west of Pyramid, above Walmart. And then the third, we're calling that the off alignment. And then the third, our ridge alignment was basically nested along the ridge of the range of mountains there between Spanish Springs and Sun Valley. That alternative or option, if you will, provides some other benefits that we take a look at. So on, off, and ridge for the section of Pyramid between Disc and Sparks Boulevard. The facility, the connector goes, will pass through Sun Valley, the southern end of Sun Valley. We looked at some different options there. We have two crossings proposed. In the draft document, we had two crossings in fairly undeveloped areas through Sun Valley, tried to minimize the property relocations that would be required. The north crossing follows pretty much a power line corridor, fairly undeveloped. The southern crossing is about 500 feet north of El Rancho, and it takes advantage of an undeveloped area just to the east of Sun Valley. So again, trying to minimize the impacts and property relocations that would be required. So a north and a south crossing, and then interchanges for access to Sun Valley, proposed at Sun Valley Boulevard. That would be signalized intersections, on and off ramps to provide direct access. And then we looked at, because of the impacts there, we looked at something to the west in an undeveloped area there that we're calling west of Sun Valley Boulevard. So north and south, at Sun Valley Boulevard and west of Sun Valley Boulevard are the options there. So with those 12 different combinations, this, what this bubble map is showing is basically the elements common to all. So with the selection of any one of those, and they're all, they were all available for selection, these elements are common to all. So at the top of the page of the slide, if you will, north of Sparks Boulevard is again a six-lane freeway, interchanges at Sparks Boulevard, Lazy Five, Dolores, and La Pasada. On the left side of the screen is the interchange, which is basically a system interchange, which would have free-flow ramps to and from the north and south on 395 onto the connector. And then on the right, lower right corner, there is just some arterial improvements. That's showing disc drive. There would just need to be some capacity improvements there due to the demand to get to this facility, and then some, also a little bit of capacity improvements on Pyramid down to McCarran. So I mentioned it's an EIS. We had to look at a lot of different impacts, and so what we did was packaged, instead of having 12 different options shown in the, in the EIS, they're all there. We packaged them into four different alternatives to make for a document that's easily understood, is, provides a good footprint of all the environmental impacts and some of the engineering criteria that we looked at as well. Some of those environmental impacts include, of course, relocations, property acquisition, noise, historic resources, wetlands, and air quality, just to name a few. So we took components of each of those 12 and put them into these four. So for example, alternative number one represented, is represented by the off alignment, the north crossing through Sun Valley, and an interchange at Sun Valley Boulevard. So with the DEIs completed in, last fall, we had public hearings. Throughout this process, there's been an extensive public outreach, culminating in the two public hearings that we held last fall. We are impacting two communities directly, Spanish Springs and Sun Valley, potentially, and so we held them in the two locations, which has been consistent with what we've done throughout. They were well-attended. We did receive comments. The comments were, in general, pretty consistent, what we've heard throughout the process over the six-year period, and that is concerns about property acquisition, of course, the traffic congestion existing and projected, and then the changes that could result from building such an improvement. The box there at the bottom shows there really was, with the comments received, there really was no clear preference indicated by the comments of the alternatives that were shown. One thing to mention before I start talking about property relocations is one other component. So of all the environmental impacts that we looked at, only relocations, to some degree visual impacts, and a little bit traffic were really an influence on the preferred alternative. Another component of it was the engineering. This is a project that has a significant amount, we took advantage of open space, however, it's challenging terrain. There's a significant amount of earthwork associated with it. Typically, you want to balance your excavated material with the material that you're going to be placing. In this case, this, that was not achievable, and we have somewhere about 5 million cubic yards of excess material, which adds significant work and cost to the project. So that was another component. I'll show you here shortly how that kind of factored into the preferred alternative. So looking at relocations, this shows basically with the four alternatives, the range of relocations, property acquisitions associated with that, 158 to 282, depending upon the alternative. Focusing in on the pyramid alignments, those three alignments that I showed you, the alignments that included the on alignment, or the alternative, excuse me, that included the on alignment, which was alternatives two and four, had significantly greater residential and commercial relocations. Again, the right-of-way is there, however, the impacts by widening and adding lanes and frontage roads and interchanges, significant, significant impacts and additional property that would be required. The other two alternatives were basically the same. So those residual impacts there for alternates one and three are basically north of Sparks Looking at Sun Valley, the takeaway from this slide is that the north crossing, which is included in alternatives one and four, had two to three times more relocations than the southern crossing. So the next four slides basically walk through the process of determining the preferred alternative. So we're showing here the three alternatives along Pyramid, and basically the four alternatives, if you will, at Sun Valley. So the host of 12 different alternatives were, again, all possible with this, as we looked at the comments and the impacts. So the red will screen out as I go through these steps. So the first step was looking at that on alternative. It was pretty obvious that there was just far too many impacts, relocations associated with it, no performance benefit. We tried to take advantage of the existing right-of-way, however, the impacts were too great, so we screened that one out. The second step was to look at the north versus the south crossing through Sun Valley. There were, as the previous slide indicated, greater impacts with the north crossing, so we screened that out. Then we looked at the interchange location for the crossing through Sun Valley, and the interchange at Sun Valley Boulevard, which provided direct access, had nine additional relocations. The performance was slightly less because it was, is located pretty close to an existing signal, so we'd have a kind of a series of signals along Sun Valley Boulevard. And there's about a half a million cubic yards of excess material that we would have had to deal, dealt with. So that was screened out. And then the last step is to look at the two alternatives there remaining on Pyramid, that off alignment that was along the hillside. If you can picture the 580 in, through Pleasant Valley, very similar visual impacts there along the hillsides, guarding that hillside. And in addition, about a million cubic yards of material excess with that alternative, so we screened that out, leaving the ridge alignment, the south crossing, and the interchange at West Sun Valley. This also corresponds with alternative number three. So moving forward, with the preferred alternative that was vetted with our project TAC that included all those agencies I mentioned earlier, we'll be preparing the final EIS. Some of the work that we have to do is to go back and look at the traffic modeling. The modeling that was done for this project was several years old. We now, the RTC now has a new traffic model platform that we'll be looking at to make sure that this project is still as was originally modeled. It's likely that we could see some reduction in traffic volumes and therefore reduction in impacts and costs potentially for the project. We've got to do some more environmental work. We're out in the field, we're going to be out in the field here, finalizing the archaeological site work that's needed on the preferred alternative. We deferred until we had a preferred. And then we'll be looking at air quality as well, which is tied into the traffic demand and modeling. So moving forward, hopefully, we'll be looking at a final late 2014, late this year, probably most likely in 2015, with a record of decision on, most likely, a phase of the project. We'll be looking at a phased record of decision, which would allow us to maybe get started on something early. There's no funding past the red line there. So the project is currently, as I mentioned, totally federally funded, no local funds to this point. We are, should there be funding, come available, we'd start looking at final design. Right now, it's very preliminary. Eventually, some right-of-way acquisition, and probably, most likely, construction would not begin until about the year 2020. And then with the phased approach, likely, build-out would not occur till 2030 and possibly beyond. I think I've covered everything. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, anybody?
I have a couple of questions. Obviously, a lot of discussion recently on the I-11 road. How, what is the update on where that is and the decision on where that interstate is going to be located and how this project may intersect with it?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Mr. Gibson to talk about him.
Good afternoon, mayor. Members of the city council, for the record, Lee Gibson, executive director of the Regional Transportation Commission. The I-11 project right now is being finalized through a corridor study that the Nevada Department of Transportation has been working on for a couple of years now. One of the alternatives that they're looking at is coming up 95, coming to Reno, coming through Reno, going up 395 through Susanville. So, so the projects, the I-11 project, should that be one of the designated routes, obviously, we would want to look at the impacts of 395 north of the Spaghetti Bowl. We would obviously want to look at the Spaghetti Bowl project, which, in the regional transportation plan, there's a substantial amount of money that would, we are looking, or would need to be spent to upgrade the Spaghetti Bowl, and in fact, we are working with the Nevada DOT to address some of those issues. We would also want to look at the I-80 segment running from basically the Washto County line into the Spaghetti Bowl, because if that becomes a designated portion of I-11, that obviously would have an effect. With respect to this project, I think some of the timelines probably don't overlap. It's hard to say I-11 is still such a conceptual project for the state this far north. We really don't have enough information. But I think with respect to the planning and the development that RTC is involved with, within DOT, we clearly want to pay attention to the right-of-way issues and make sure in the future there would be the appropriate amount of right-of-way necessary to serve an I-11 alignment that would come that way. So I think, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jarden, I think those are good points, and I think we want to, as we move into the next phases, we want to take a look at those issues.
Just another, another question. So let's say the traffic counts, because things have slowed, obviously, let's say the traffic counts don't merit this, this project, or certainly maybe in its current course or direction it's headed. What, what is the alternative to relieve some of that Pyramid traffic? I mean, what do you see as an alternative should the, should this bigger project not be? With respect to this project, I think some of the timelines probably don't overlap. It's hard to say I-11 is still such a conceptual project for the state this far north. We really don't have enough information. But I think with respect to the planning and the development that RTC is involved with within DOT, we clearly want to pay attention to the right-of-way issues and make sure in the future there would be the appropriate amount of right-of-way necessary to serve an I-11 alignment that would come that way. So I think, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jardon, I think those are good points, and I think we want to, as we move into the next phases, we want to take a look at those issues.
Just another question. So let's say the traffic counts, because things have slowed, obviously. Let's say the traffic counts don't merit this, this project, or certainly maybe in its current course or direction it's headed. What, what is the alternative to relieve some of that Pyramid traffic? I mean, what do you see as an alternative should the, should this bigger project not be merited?
Well, I think the bigger project, let's, let's maybe characterize things. Our traffic models still show significant traffic congestion within the Pyramid corridor. So we still have to deal with the traffic congestion. The Pyramid-McCarren intersection project that we are now acquiring right-of-way in homes and getting ready to begin the demolition process this summer is like a first step in dealing with that project. The second step, of course, is what Doug laid out for you today, and that is improvements up Pyramid Highway and then over and connecting into 395. That would help us bring, you know, relief of, of traffic using McCarran as well as using I-80. I think what, what, what our consulting team and the state DOT are going to look at is what's really needed. What's the new numbers telling us north of Disk Drive? Is it still a freeway, or do we go to an expressway alternative? You know, is there a design change that's necessary to deal with that? And that's really what we're going to be looking at as we go through the forecast updates. I do want to add one follow-on that's just maybe timely, and it was something that was discussed at the State Transportation Board meeting. In August, the Highway Trust Fund, and also I'll be raising this Friday at the RTC Board meeting, but in August, the Highway Trust Fund goes broke. The state right now is grappling with a number of projects it will be putting on hold because the Highway Trust Fund just will not have cash in its bank account to pay for some of these projects. For this project, in my mind, long-term to go, to deal with, with this, with the issues here, with the issues with I-11, we're going to need a permanent fix to the Highway Trust Fund. We're going to need to deal with either tax reform, as was documented in the Grow America Act, or something at the federal level to make sure that in the long-term, and by long-term, I'm meaning the really long-term, 50 years, there's going to be money to build infrastructure. We all know there's a great push by EDON, by many businesses to come to this region. I think the latest one that I saw was the whole question of lithium and mining lithium. We all have, I see, we all have devices today. Those use lithium batteries. That demand is going to continue to increase. I-11, this connector project, moving those types of cargoes are going to be critical, but having funding to do those types of projects is going to be something we all need to, and again, not to, not to maybe go too far, but through our shared federal framework, through our work in Washington, make sure that gets done, because we could see a very significant national crisis, in my mind, on infrastructure coming about if we don't get a fix to the Highway Trust Fund. So I'll get off my soapbox.
Mr. Mayor, how much has been spent today on this project?
The contract with Jacobs Engineering is 8.2 million. We're, we're about 90%.
Okay, so we spent, in north of 7 million on this project today. I guess, thanks for the explanation on the Highway Trust Fund. You know, I, I think a lot of us who focus on transportation funding in this country know, you know, we're not going to be looking at Washington DC, but fortunately, we have RTC 5, which has created a, a lot of money and a sustainable funding source for our local road transportation needs. But those in themselves are limited in, you know, you know, limited at some level. And I saw a long time ago that this was about a, on the out years, a half-billion-dollar project.
Actually, it's about 1.2 billion.
Billion.
In today's dollars.
B, okay. So that follows up on a discussion we've had here at this table. We have about $14 million annually in local road maintenance repairs. This isn't building new roads. This is maintaining the roads that we all rely upon when we leave our driveways in the morning. And we're only about able to fund about $2.5 million of that a year of our own needs, and some of that comes from an override, but some of that comes from just general fund money that we'd rather put toward, you know, maybe fire services. But how can we think, you know, I'm trying to get priorities, you know, a $2 billion new freeway or a sustainable program of funding our local road needs of the system we already have? How do you think that, I mean, can we do it all? Because we're not doing it all right now, and we're, we're continuing to look at these big mega projects. And I hear that, you know, I hear about the conscurrence about our road maintenance efforts.
I'll take a shot at answering the question. We at the RTC obviously have RTC 5 money. We use preventative maintenance money every year in the 10 to 15 million dollar range, and that, those are roads that are prioritized through a local process, working with each of the entities. I know the cities receive, I believe it's NRS 365 money. That's a 6-point-something cents per gallon that goes to the entities, and that's also indexed to inflation, and those funds are obviously used by all of the entities for road maintenance, and we are certainly, that's a helpful, obviously helpful and significant portion of that. I think with the long-term question of, of funds for projects like the 395 connector or improvements to I-80 or I-11, the state, the state is going to have to step up to the plate like the local governments have in this state and deal with the question of how and where that money's going to come from. We both, we have an index fuel tax arrangement now in Washoe County. We've had it since 2009. Clark County has now started it. The state DOT is probably the last one standing, I guess, who has not implemented an indexing plan. Those are really, that's maybe the place I think I would encourage the state legislature to look at for raising funds to deal with the interstate system. You're right, Councilman Bruckus, we have limits. Our limits here at RTC are to Washoe County. We can't go really outside much of Washoe County borders in order to do projects. I-11 is going to have to come through, what, Nye, Lincoln, not Lincoln, Nye, Esmeralda, Story, all the counties between here and Las Vegas. Those funds are going to have to come from somewhere, and I think the states, to me, is the obvious choice. And also, it's going to take a federal fix. There's got to be a federal fix to, to, to the system, so.
My final question is Nevada revised statutes requires localities to have a comprehensive transportation plan, the cities and the county. Is, this isn't in our master plan as our comprehensive transportation, you know, priority, is it?
I don't know if it's in the city's master plan. It is in the regional transportation plan, which is adopted by the RTC as the MPO, and that is the plan that we use to comply with the Nevada revised statute, which says that if you're going to have a motor fuels tax in a county, you have to have a plan and you have to have an RTC.
And is it in Sparks' master plan? Because all those plans have to be consistent with the regional plan. Do you know if it's in Sparks' or the county's?
It's, I believe, is in Sparks' plan, but for purposes of federal funding, the plan that counts is the MPO's RTP.
As a part of your planning efforts, are you going to propose a master plan amendment so that we will have the chance to decide whether or not this should show in our city's comprehensive plan? I know only two or three miles are going through our jurisdiction, but, you know, are you going to bring that forward as a master plan amendment?
We, we will take a look at what those planning requirements are, just like we've done with all the others. I know with Southeast Connector, there was, that was included in the, in the master plan.
No, it wasn't in the Reno master plan.
Well, I do know from a, I mean, just again, from a legal standpoint, for the expenditure of gas tax dollars, it has to be in this document right here. The projects are then selected by the RTC, and then the county authorizes the use of fuel taxes. For purposes of federal funding, again, as long as it's in the RTP, those federal funds can be expended on that project.
Thank you.
And this project is just federal funds?
Right now, it's federal-funded. That's our plan.
Well, the federal funds are basically evaporated in August. And have been shrinking because the formula.
Well, yeah, they have, but they've approved this, or they're working on, they haven't approved it yet, but this is where we're getting the money for that project.
Correct. The monies that have been spent today have been federal funds that the RTC received through congressional appropriations.
And we can't use those for repairs or anything else?
No, we cannot.
I do have a question. So you showed that map that there's funding that could potentially bring it to a certain point, and this is, forgive my newness, is the full project funding isn't identified at the outset of a project?
Actually, the funding for the project, when we're done with the, with the record of decision, we will sit down with NDOT and prepare a funding plan, because at that point, we'll have cost estimates that are much more reliable than they are now. And that funding plan is a federal requirement before the project can be given a green light to go ahead, and that's really what we'll do with the NDOT and, and look at the different federal sources, state sources, debt financing, phasing of the project, and make sure we can move forward with that. And that'll be coming up very soon. And, and the RTC will be looking at that and participating in that process, because it will be that document that we'll be relying on in order to make programming decisions into the Transportation Improvement Program, which is really a companion document to the RTP.
Okay, so you don't build to a point until the money runs out, and then you hope you get some more, and then you build another.
No, you have, you have to show the, you have to show the federal government that you can build what's, and I know this is kind of a technical term, but you build a road that's really got logical terminology, so that if you don't ever get any more money, fundamentally, you have a road that will, will lead to purpose.
So you're confident under existing federal transportation financing framework that this would follow or, or be allowed under FHWA as a fiscal constraint, not meeting air quality, meeting expansion needs? Because I understand that federal guidelines have really shifted away from mega projects of new, of expanding capacity. Won't do expanding capacity.
Let me be clear. Let me be clear. This project today is in the regional transportation plan. Our regional transportation plan is a conforming, meets the air quality conformity requirements of the Clean Air Act, and it meets the fiscal constraints imposed by the FHWA. So this, this right now, today, this project and all of its components and all of its costs meet every federal requirement that has been imposed on us to this date.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. And now we will have Beth McMillan with Art Town. Let's hold it down.
Esteemed Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for having me here today. My name is Beth McMillan, Executive Director of Art Town. I am here today, you were all very busy last week, that you missed the press conference, so I'm here today to applaud you and to thank you for your support over the last 19 years. Without your support, July in Reno would be bookended by the rodeo and hot August nights and a hot month in July. With your support, however, I'm going to show you, show you a short DVD of what you can expect in July of 2014. July in Reno means one thing, Art Town. Our 19th year brings with it a continuing focus on Art Town's contribution to the community. With an estimated $15 million economic impact, Art Town is continuing its mission to serve beyond the arts by connecting communities and enhancing quality of life. Where else can you find 32 days filled with music, dance, theater, history, visual arts, and film in a family-friendly cultural experience? In 2013, Art Town enriched 300,000 attendees, which showcased artists from around the world while collaborating with our own local arts community. Reno truly is Art Town. Art Town is one of the nation's most comprehensive arts and culture festivals, offering a plethora of events, with most of them free to the public. Now let's look at some of the more than 500 events that make up our 2014 festival, beginning with our exciting opening on July the 1st.
Paints your palette blue and red. Look out on a summer's day with eyes that know the darkness in my soul.
Look for our new website with easy and ongoing updates. Mark your calendar for your favorite events. Visit renoisarttown.com to view our interactive calendar. And please consider connecting with us on Facebook, Twitter, Flickr, and Instagram. Pick up one of Art Town's little book calendars, available at your local scolari's, US bank branches, and at all Art Town locations throughout the area. Art Town is made possible by the following generous sponsors. Who support the festival in our mission to strengthen Reno's arts industry, enhance our civic identity and national image, thereby creating a climate for the cultural and economic rebirth of our region. Primary funding for the Art Town Festival is provided by the City of Reno. Are you ready for this year's extensive and diverse Art Town season? We will see you in the park. So that, that's just a brief snapshot. We actually have more than 500 events that will go on during the month of July. In addition, tomorrow night, we've been working with KNPB, and they raised money, and they're doing a documentary called The Work of Art: Art Town, and it will be premiered tomorrow night on PBS at 8 o'clock, and it's going to be released nationally, for national, yeah, national release, I guess, on all PBS stations throughout the country. So thank you very much for your support. We couldn't do this without all of you. I really appreciate it, and on behalf of the community, I know they appreciate it too. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, and your board and everybody else. It's a great event, and I hope we keep expanding it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there a question?
Did it say closing night was July 32nd?
It did.
It's because it's on a Friday.
Yeah, it's on August 1st. And it has to stay in the month of July, so that's the only way we could do it.
I thought that was cute.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll jump to ordinance adoptions.
Which is G1, which is ordinance number 6332, ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code Title 18 Annexation and Land Development, Chapters 18.06 and 18.08, in order to allow accessory solar structures without discretionary review, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to Adam H. 1.
Resolution number 7971. Resolution granting $1,443 to the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, $1,000 to the Sanford Center for Aging, $2,000 to the State Health Insurance Assistant Program, $1,000 to the Alzheimer's Association, $1,000 to the Healthy Communities Coalition, and $4,000 to the Center for Healthy Aging, all of which are. $4,000 to the Center for Healthy Aging, all of which are nonprofit organizations that provide senior adult outreach program and services to promote the health and wellness of senior adults in our community, with the outcome of maintaining their independence and self-reliance, for a total amount of $10,443.
Mr. George, take motion, because I'm gonna make a motion, we approve this, for old folks. Thank you, I'll take it back now. Item H2.
Resolution 7972, resolution supporting continued operations at the U.S. Postal Service Centers in Reno, and urging Congress to address any fiscal challenges facing the U.S. Postal Service with an awareness of insensitivity to how proposed reforms will affect U.S. Postal Service employees.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H3.
Resolution 7973, resolution approving a grant to Truckee Meadows Community College Foundation for costs associated with producing the first annual biggest little city fair, including directing city service in the amount of $5,500. Mr. Mayor, there was a clerical error in the original resolution. The word "foundation" was not added to the Truckee Meadows Community College, and it is the 501(c)(3) that this money is going to, and the documents have been reflected to correct that.
Okay.
And that's from my discretionary funds. Move to approve?
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, number I1.
Bill number 6902, ordinance to amend Title II of the Reno Municipal Code, establishing appointive officer and appointive employee positions by amending Section 2.06.030 relating to the designation of appointive officers, adding Section 2.06.035, designating appointed, appointive employees, amending Section 2.06.050 relating to the qualification of appointive officers and appointive employees, adding Section 2.06.055 relating to existing successor appointees, and amending Section 2.14.020 relating to salary administration together with other matters properly relating thereto.
I have a question. I, I thought this was pooled. Well, I have a num, okay, I guess I'm misreading. I, I had a number of questions of this, related to this, that went unanswered, so I'll, I'll follow up right now on this. These appointive officers, what does the charter say about these appointed officers? Who are they?
The Councilmember Brekis, the appointive officers are the head of a department or division within the city.
What's the chain of command for these people? Are these people who report directly to the city manager? Is that terms used in the charter, directly?
It, I believe it is.
So, tell me this, some of these people, do they report directly to the city manager? Like the, I don't know, the deputy public works director, the environmental programs manager, the building and safety manager? Is the line of, chain of command direct to the city manager for these people?
They report to the respective department head who reports directly to the city manager.
So is this conform, then, to the charter? If it, the charter uses the word "directly" to the city manager, and yet we have people who are calling appointive officers who do not report directly to the city manager? Why the confusion? I see the chief of police, the chief reports directly to the city manager.
Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, good afternoon. For the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. If I may, for a point of clarification, I'd like to give the citation from the charter, because I think it will bring some clarification to the questions that you are, that you are asking. Section 1.090 of the city charter, subsection 3, says that the city council may establish other appointive offices as it may deem necessary for the operation of the city by designating the positions and the qualifications therefore by ordinance, which is the action that's before you today. Appointive offices are limited to the head of each department or division. I believe that the two positions that you just inquired about are in fact division heads within departments. And it further goes on to clarify one immediate assistant for the director of public works. In the fire department and police department, no positions below the office of chief, and then special technical staff members who report directly to the city manager, serving as appointive employees.
Well, what about, okay, so the graphic designer, is that person a department head?
Councilmember Brekis, I believe we're, I believe we're striking the graphic designer.
I see it underlined. I don't see it struck out. I mean, I guess, tell me, help me out with that one. Strikeout is, strikeout is, graphic designer, you're, yeah, that's, that's not.
I do see that there, and I think that that is actually an error, that the graphic designer is a, is a position that we have had previously and should have been in the cleanup from this stricken. The, the language that exists within the charter relating to special technical employees that report directly to the city manager was a result of the charter change made in the last legislative session whereby there was a designation made between officers and employees, because under additional provisions, the ethics provisions, the financial disclosure statements, other things that are required in other areas of statute of officers, didn't, this council, the prior charter committee and the legislature agreed were not appropriate for certain levels of appointive employees. And so that distinction was made. As that language was written, the, the intent was to cover those special technical staff members who do report through this, to the city manager. It may be that those particular employees have, have that reporting relationship through someone like myself, but, but that the intent at the time of that language was to capture those, really, policy advisors, if you will, persons who are carrying out the policy work of the manager and the city council.
So officers are individuals or subject in, like, like yourself, you're an officer, you have a disclosure down on this, written record at the Secretary of State, and as does the other assistant city manager.
That's correct, Councilmember Brekis.
On your conflicts of interest. Okay, but, but tell me this, the charter committee, I guess my issues are a bit of prophesies. We have a charter committee that's looking at all of these, and where are they at on this? Are they gonna make a recommendation on how to interpret that section?
Yes, Councilmember Brekis, they have had a considerable amount of discussion on this particular subject, both within this section of the section, Article 1 of the charter, and then also Article 9, because if you are not in a point of at-will position, then you are within our classified civil service position. They are recommending that there be some refinements to the language to align more closely to what the practices of the city are, so that there is not confusion about the language as it is currently written. I think it's important to note that those recommendations, while they will be coming forward to this body in very short order, will not go forward to the legislature until the 2015 session. And so really, the earliest that they could be adopted would be in 2015. This particular ordinance, which we are required under the charter to, to maintain and update, has not been updated since 2007. There are a number of positions that are still designated by ordinance that no longer exist in the city and are not anticipated to be needed. There's, there's have been position changes, and so we think that while indeed they are doing work that will relate to this, that, that those changes are, could be more than a year away, and that it is prudent for us to make these updates now and, and then come back after that action is taken, if in fact the legislature approves those changes.
Well, I mean, I disagree. You know, we had a discussion last week about how we have committees, we appoint committees, the charter committee's meeting every, every week, and we're jumping the gun on something that they're gonna be bringing forward to us, and I, I just don't think that is good process, just like with the Building Enterprise Finance Committee the other day, we, we jumped the gun. I think we need to rely upon what the recommendations are. Another problem I have with this is you mentioned that we have a lot of positions that aren't necessarily reflected in the organization. Of all the positions listed here, how many are presently unfilled or frozen because of budgetary reasons?
There are a number of these, of those positions that are, I think, some positions that you have talked about as recently as the most recent budget workshop, the risk manager, the internal auditor, that may be positions that through budget processes you wish to fill. And, and our intent in leaving those in the ordinance so that they are designated by the city council is that if in fact it was the desire of the council or the city manager felt the need to fill those positions, that there would not be an unnecessary delay because there would be a requirement to go in and update the ordinance. So there are in fact a number of positions which are, remain within the, the section of the ordinance that are currently unfilled. Councilmember Brekis, as you know, if those positions were going to be filled and would impact the budget of, of any department, then those items would need to be brought back to this council as a budget augmentation to implement those.
Oh, really? That's how we do it? Okay.
So this is basically a cleanup.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would categorize it as a cleanup, and, and Councilmember Brekis, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I don't know that we are preempting the work of, of the charter committee. I think that that work would be, would be subsequent to this work, and I do think that we have a duty at this time, that it's been seven years since we have updated this ordinance. Our organization has gone through significant changes as a result of the reductions in staff, the realignment of duties, the changing of positions that was necessary because of the economy, and I think it's appropriate to have our ordinances reflect the current status of our organization.
Well, I disagree. I think that, one, we are, at a time we're laying off critical line staff to be stockpiling positions that are at-will, and hire in the organization is wrong and bad faith. So I disagree that, with that. Two, the other feeling I have is that the manager never brought, this is a matter of policy on how our organization is structured, and the manager never brought this forward for policy direction. This just appeared, all of a sudden. We don't have had discussion about some of the roles and functions in here, some I've argued that we hopefully can get, but I don't think it's right to be putting these in at this time and structuring our organization this way.
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in, I guess first of all, I would say we're not stockpiling positions.
Yes.
And second of all, I mean, it's at the table today for a policy discussion. I mean, that's why it's here.
Well, I personally think we need to do the house cleaning and get it cleaned up, and then if something comes down later and we go into 2015, then future councils can, so.
Well, I would, I would.
Is the ordinance read?
No. Did you read the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, yes, the ordinance was read.
All right. Have a second.
Well, I would like to say what I think would be the best process for this organization to move forward with this ordinance before us is, one, refer to the charter committee for their understanding, because I, I understand from reading the minutes of the charter committee that they're proposing a significantly different way of structuring the appointed at-will, not as limited, not even having an ordinance like this, capping the number. So two, I'd like, yes, well, as someone who assigns someone to give up every Thursday night for six, nine months, I'd like to honor them in that way. Second, I'd like, we pointed out a technical error in here, you just, you know, confirmed that there was an error in here, so maybe a cleanup of the ordinance for next, for that time. And also, I'd like to know how many of these positions are new, and how many are, how many are filled presently, and how many are unfilled presently, in the history? That would be, in my mind, a best approach.
You could get that information by going to Ms.
Well, and I'm, would motion to defer it till the, at time.
There's a motion on the table, you can't make a motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Just real quick, just real quick, Mr. Mayor. This does not interfere with what the charter.
Not a bit.
Committee's doing. This is to clean up the existing ordinance. It's, that's, that's all it's doing, is cleaning up the existing ordinance. The changes that they're gonna recommend, the council's gonna decide whether or not to take those changes to the legislature, and if the legislature makes those changes, we'll have to clean it up again. It's a regular process. It doesn't change anything. And it, it just, it, it cleans up the situation we have today.
Well, for today's reality, you have positions in here that aren't even in the organization. So how does it clean it up for today?
We have, there's several positions that are, that are unfunded in this organization, but there's still positions that we're holding out there to, to hopefully at some future date, fill those positions.
Mr. Mayor, for, for purposes, I think it's important for, for, for the record, to be clear. The, the analysis that staff undertook was, was going through the ordinance and looking at the positions that are currently existing, they're codified in Reno Municipal Code today, and where those positions no longer exist within the organization and where it's not anticipated, that based on the structure of our organization today, and as we look, you know, into the near future, we don't, we don't see those positions. The position titles have changed, the duties may have changed, and, and we have aligned those there, where we see that there are positions, such that we've talked about earlier, risk manager, internal auditor, that the council has indicated that there may be a desire to fill those positions. We have, we have left them in. I also think it's important for the purposes of the record to indicate that the recommendations thus far from the charter committee have not been, in fact, to eliminate the requirement that these positions be included by ordinance. In fact, they are clarifying that not only does the ordinance need to cover the appointive officers, but that it must also cover the employed employees, which it currently doesn't do, but we are bringing forward because we think it's a best practice. So I appreciate the opportunity to clarify the record.
Thank you very much. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, no, oppose, no, show the vote for one. You know, I'd like to remind this council, we're policy setters and everything else, not department heads, or running the show around here, and we all can have opinions. This is one that I brought up a long time ago, and want to find out what Mr. Chisler, I mean Chizzle, has to say.
Well, you'll probably call me Chisler in a minute here. Robert Chisler, Director of Finance and Administration, for the record. I got a small little presentation to help walk through this item, as the mayor just mentioned. At the February 26th city council meeting, staff was directed to research the existing resolutions establishing the salaries and compensation for elected officials, and to come back with some, some presentation on those salaries and benefits, and that's what we're doing here, and also staff is seeking direction from council on how to proceed to make any changes, if any, on the salary and compensation of elected officials. The elected officials that we are gonna be discussing, of course, are the city attorney, the city council mayor and council, municipal court judges, and I'll be going through the compensation that includes the salary, the benefits. And then there's a third item where we have, need some clarification on retirement compensation in regards to PERS for retired employees that come back to work. For the city attorney, currently, the city attorney's salary is 5% above the salary range of the chief deputy city attorney, and that was established by Resolution 4500. The salary is approximately $164,000 a year. The benefits for the position are tied to that of management, so they, city attorney will receive the same benefits that management employees receive. There is allowances of auto and sell of $6,960 respectively. There's also a payment in lieu of PERS of $42,000, we will discuss a little more about that item. For the city attorney, there is no planned changes for the fiscal year 15 time period. For mayor and council, the salary was set by two resolutions, one for the council and one for the mayor. This was set in 2004 and 2006, based on the upcoming election during those periods, and was tied to the CPI index. The CPI index is set to increase by 1.8%, so all of council and mayor salaries are set to increase July 1 by 1.8%. Current council salaries are $67,000 per year and will go up to $69,000. The mayor's salary is $74,000 and will go up to $75,000. In addition, there are allowances of auto and sell of $9,000 and $1,800, I'd like to point out. Mayor and some council members have taken voluntary reductions, and I'll show that on the next slide. And again, the benefits are tied to that of management, so council gets the same benefits as management. This just kind of shows the salaries, the automobile allowance, and the voluntary reductions each of the council members and the mayor have taken. Some of them are indefinite, some of them have sunset dates, and then at the bottom just shows what the base wage will be and the additional PERS will be come July 1 with the 1.8% CPI increase. Municipal court judges, the municipal court judges had their salaries set in 2003 to be 7.5% less than that of the district court judges, and since that time, their increase was tied to management salaries by a separate resolution, 6214. Currently, their salaries are approximately $150,000 a year. They have not received any change in salary since 2008. Of course, management did not either, so that's why their salaries have not changed. Allowances, they get an allowance of $6,000 for auto and for, $540 for sell. Judges have also taken voluntary reductions and have reduced their auto allowance to zero. And again, their benefits are tied to other elected officials, which in essence is tied to management, so we're all at the same benefit level. So, we're all at the same benefit level. No changes anticipated in salary and benefits for fiscal year 15. The last item I wanted to talk about was a payment in lieu of PERS. This is, impacts employees that, or elected officials, they were employees and they have retired into the PERS system, and then they come back as an elected official. A paid elected official can receive a salary and receive PERS at the same time. And in fact, NRS 286-520 allows us to continue to make a payment to that elected official in lieu of a PERS payment to a retirement account. So, what would happen is if the mayor retires and decides to select, collect his PERS and comes back as another elected official, instead of collecting, paying the PERS payment, we would be paying that money to a deferred comp retirement account for that individual. NRS 286 is enabling, allows us to do that, but it is not mandatory. So, it is an option. If the council chooses to change that option and would say if an elected official comes back and is collecting PERS, we would not have to pay that PERS payment in lieu of to a retirement account. And so what I'm seeking today from you and got through here is the city attorney, city council, judges, and payment in lieu of PERS. I'm seeking direction from council if you would like to make any changes to any of the salary allowances, benefits, compensation packages for any of the elected officials, and we would develop resolutions and return at a future date.
The only, the only one I have a problem with, and John, it has nothing to do with you, but the only one I have is where we pay the extra PERS into a retirement account. I personally think that that's wrong. And I know that was negotiated. I have nothing against it, but I think hindsight in the future, I don't think, if you've already retired, you're collecting PERS. I know you could take it, but I don't think we should have that where they can do that.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment about that?
Yes, sir. You sure can.
Of course, I'm John Cadlec. I'm the city attorney. Here's your one question that you should answer before you make that decision. If you choose to pay someone who retired from PERS and then comes back an elected official, who's therefore probably of retirement age, are you, the legal question would be, are you discriminating against him on the basis of age? I never raised that that time, but that was one of the thoughts if it ever got into litigation, that you're discriminating against him because you're treating him at a different salary than you are someone who is not retired out of PERS. That's the question you have to look at. I don't know what the answer is, and it's not going to affect me personally. So, I'm just raising that. It's an issue that you might want to have that researched just in case that that is, because you're treating him different in terms of salary and benefits than you would someone who hasn't been elected, who hasn't retired from PERS. That's the only question I raise.
But it's not his salary.
It doesn't affect me personally. I don't really, but I'm ready, just the thought that you might want to have that researched just to be sure that you don't go do something and then find out you do that, and then you get sued, and some federal court says you've discriminated against this person on a basis of age because you're treating him differently. That's the issue to look at. Again, it doesn't affect me personally. I just think it's something you ought to look at and consider.
Yes.
Well, I guess the, the question I have is, I worry to some degree that someone would make it a campaign issue. I mean, if you're running for city attorney or any, any elected position, and you're running against someone that, that would get that benefit and you don't, I mean, that your argument could be, look, I'm going to save, in, in Mr. Cadlec's case, you elect me regardless of my qualifications, I'm going to save you $50,000 a year because I don't get that benefit that the other candidate would. I mean, you're treating those two candidates differently, completely, by, by offering them different packages. And I, I, I think that's a concern that I have, is they're just, they're just not treated equally. I mean, if you're going to put two people on the ballot, I think those two people on the ballot need to be treated equally across the board and decide on their, on their merits, not based upon, oh, wait, I could save the city $50,000 if I elect this person versus this person.
That is a good point. Same thing, a good point Mr. Cadlec brought up.
My question to, to Mr. Cadlec's point, couldn't somebody be retired out of PERS and not be of age to be discriminated? I mean, is there mathematically?
Yeah. You, you could, you can retire at PERS, be below the age of, actually below the age of 50. Actually, there's reductions in PERS. You could retire with 30 years, or if you're public safety, at 25. So, you could be actually under 50 years old and be retired from the.
But it's over 40. Age discrimination does it, at 40.
But if we, if we pass this where you can't collect PERS over here and have a set aside PERS, if that's spelled out in advance, why are we discriminating against anybody?
It is, in my opinion, you know, we have looked at this, and it is enabling rather than mandatory in the legislation. So, it would be up to council's decision as to which approach to take.
So, doesn't say we have to.
No.
It's enabling. And if we took out the enabling, then we wouldn't have to.
Correct.
Well, I personally think that somebody that's, and I know they've already put time in, and I know that they've already done, but when they run for the office, they know they're not going to get that. So, I don't see where you're discriminating, because you've told them upfront what the rules are when you run for that office. And I think that that's where we get in trouble with the public, is they see that's another way to go double dip or triple dip in a program. And that's what they call double or triple dip. We don't do that for the chief of police. He retired, we save $150,000 a year, or whatever it is. And I think that that should be the same, not just for the city attorney, but anybody else that's in that category.
And Mr. Mayor, I, and I certainly appreciate what the chief's done, but I look at that separately. He's not an elected. I, I mean, and again, I just, for me, my challenge is exactly what I laid out. I just think.
Well, if it's elected and you don't have that, why, what is it?
But you're comparing, again, my challenge, Bob, is you're comparing those candidates differently. I, I mean.
Or you're pairing them on the same pedestal.
Well, like I said, in Mr. Cadlec's position, it would be $50,000 less.
But anybody that's running for office knows it pays a salary.
I'm not, you're not.
Don't get all these other benefits.
I'm just saying, you allow a candidate to make that a campaign issue. But if you elect me, regardless of my qualifications, if you elect me, I'm going to save you $50,000 a year because I don't get that PERS benefit.
But the guy that's running against him is not getting it either.
Yeah, they would.
They might.
Because they may not be on PERS.
Huh?
They may not be on PERS.
They might not be on PERS, so they would get the PERS.
Let's, um, let's talk about timing on this one. Mr. Cadlec's term expires in just a few months, right?
Right.
So, he's currently getting that. I guess the question would be, and it's programmed in the budget that we're thinking about adopting in, you know, next week, do we want to continue with that commitment that a previous council made to give him this in lieu of PERS? I guess that's one question. Or do we, or not? Or do we just wait until after the election, see if we have anyone who even falls in that category, and at that time, the council can make that decision, you know, whether or not to continue that for anyone who's newly elected, whether it's a judge, or a new council person, or a city attorney, or the mayor?
Any change we would make would not take place for current sitting elected officials. It would be for future.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. City council doesn't have the power under the charter to change a salary and benefit of a sitting elected official. In relation to the city attorney's budget, you would need to budget that amount either way, because the person would either be given the PERS benefit because they're in PERS, or if you determine you wanted to give them the, the additional into a retirement count. So, it needs to be budgeted.
Let me ask you this about that charter language interpretation, because I did have a question about that. I was reading the charter the other night, and it said salary. Is salary, are benefits inclusive of salary?
I believe that the PERS benefit would be part of salary because it's based upon the salary. I don't think you could legally distinguish that in that charter provision.
Okay, but the, the other allowances possibly?
The other allowances possibly.
Yeah, because.
But I don't think the PERS benefit you could do that.
Why can't you get for one and not others?
Well, one's a cellphone allowance. That is totally different than salary. Your PERS benefit is based upon your salary, and it's basically a component of the budgeting of the salary.
Of the salary. You think, so you think the charter word salary is inclusive of the benefits. Okay. Okay, that helps. I mean, I, I don't know, you know, we could rescind it and make it not in effect for whoever comes on next time. And that would be, I think, the spirit of what the mayor's trying to go with. And philosophically, I agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, just so, there is no specific resolution you would have to rescind as a technicality. That occurred when this current city attorney came into play when he was elected, but there was no resolution or specific action you have to rescind. But what Mr. Chisel is recommending, if you were going to say you're not going to provide that benefit, that you create a resolution in that regard.
Okay.
So, it's kind of the opposite.
And, and is that?
And we're, we're just seeking direction at this time on these items.
And, and you're proposing, Mayor, that we do a resolution to that effect?
That's right.
Okay. I, I would support that, I think.
Let's go back to the scenario that Councilman Doritz just identified, that it gives a candidate a leg up over another one. I believe we would currently have that opportunity for a candidate that is running for council right now.
Counsel?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. So, the action that we would take could potentially impact or not that candidate. So, for, if, if we're trying to be as fair as we can about this, if it doesn't affect any current sitting member, does it also not affect a candidate that's out there right now?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, I know it would affect at least two candidates out there right now. So, you're aware of it. It may affect more, but I'm aware of at least two.
But I guess my, my question to the argument of it affecting the candidate and somehow that being a campaign tactic or benefit or deficit, couldn't someone who is running for an office right now profess that they're going to give back their whole first year salary, and, and they are gaining in essence that same benefit on a voluntary basis? So, I, I'm not sure that, that, that argument, I have a hard time, because I think it's happening. And I, I don't know, I don't think you, you.